Motion was made by David Bu and seconded by Mark Parrish to approve this and amend the budget to allow for this expense. Motion carried unanimously. The Royal Bishop Chief of Police met with the board. He presented a written report which noted some of the calls responded to by his department during the last month. He also said that his bulletproof vest was ordered. Unfinished business Chase Bernizer, four inch council president, and Corey Moon, city attorney, met with the board. Corey provided preliminary lease agreement between the city and the four inch council for the city lake property south of the drive. This was reviewed by the board with some suggestions being made. Chase agreed to take this to their next meeting for their board to review and make recommendations. Under new business, the city clerk read bill number seven oh nine, proposed ordinance number seven oh nine, the floodplain management ordinance by title only. Motion was made by Mark Parrish and seconded by Alex Reel for bill number seven oh nine to be read a second time by title only. Motion carried unanimously and was read by title only. Motion was made by Alex Reel and seconded by Mark Parrish to adopt ordinance number seven oh nine. Roll call vote was taken. Eyes Doc Crickser, Delmar Strange, David Bu, Rick Yoakum, Alex Reel, Mark Parrish, nays none. Motion carried unanimously and ordinance number seven oh nine was adopted. The board considered an application for a retail liquor by drink resort license submitted by Deborah L. Melendez, the five oh two fourth street in Bering, Missouri. Location of the business would be five oh one south fourth street, the former VFW. Motion was made by Mark Parrish and seconded by David Bu to approve the liquor license application submitted by Deborah Melendez. Motion carried unanimously. November meeting of the Board of Alderman is scheduled for Monday, November eleventh. There was a consensus of the board to change this to Tuesday, November twelfth due to the Veterans Day holiday. Motion was made by David Bu and seconded by Mark Parrish to adjourn. Motion carried and the meeting was adjourned. Any divisions?
Any questions?
Corrections? So we also had a special meeting October fifteenth. Board of Alderman met in a special session with Mayor Steve Peters presiding. Alderman present, Doc Crickser, Delmar Strange, David Bu, Rick Yoakum, Alex Reel, Mark Parrish, absent none. Mayor Steve Peters called the meeting to order and gave the invocation. Pledge of allegiance was recited by everyone present. Mayor Peters informed the board that the city of Edinam is eligible to receive loan slash grant funds from the USDA Rural Development. The city's backhoe is twenty-one years old and could be replaced if approved through this program. The application can be made through a community-based nonprofit corporation or a spinoff of the city could be created. Motion was made by Rick Yoakum and seconded by Alex Reel to apply through the Knox County Community Development Corporation, KCCDC, if approved by their board. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Mark Parrish and seconded by Rick Yoakum to apply for funding for a CAP four sixteen F two backhoe loader in the amount of ninety-six thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars if KCCDC agrees to apply for the funding on behalf of the city. Motion carried unanimously. The other backhoe that was considered was a Case five eighty super N four-wheel-drive loader backhoe in the amount of ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Mayor Peters said the estimate for the Purcell Street sewer lift station repairs and maintenance was nearly fourteen thousand dollars. He said USDA Rural Development has confirmed that these sewer repairs are allowable expenses that can be paid out of the replacement and extension fund. Motion was made by Alex Reel and seconded by Mark Parrish to approve up to fifteen thousand dollars for the Purcell Street sewer lift station repairs. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Mark Parrish and seconded by Alex Reel to adjourn. Motion carried and the meeting was adjourned.
Any questions on that? Okay, thank you, Mark.
Collections for October two thousand nineteen. Water twenty thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. Sewer nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Sanitation sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-one cents. General fund seven thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Recreation two hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents. Street five hundred and ninety-five dollars and four cents. Special lights seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents. Posit eight hundred and forty dollars. Reserve and improvement fund one thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty cents for a total of sixty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. Good?
Anybody? Thank you, Kelly. All right, Peggy, I guess we're ready for you already.
Okay. Did you want to do citizens' comments or anybody else that needs to get in and out before I start? Since I'm going to take longer tonight than Mama.
Except they're not citizen comments.
They're on the agenda.
They're the, the lake.
Oh, okay. Which is quite a bit further down. Okay. Okay. Okay, we've got a lot to deal with tonight. Shall we just start with the treasuries report? And if you've got any questions on that, I think it's pretty routine. No questions, we'll move on. Okay. Okay. We're going to start with a discussion of our utility rates. Funds that we do utilities in are considered like a business or an enterprise fund to where what comes in is supposed to take care of what goes out. So it's been a while since we adjusted our rates. And so kind of what's going on here is I'm going to show you where we're at and what we need to do to make some adjustments. So the water rates, I've got the two thousand and seventeen revenues of about two hundred and fifty-six thousand nine fifty-four, less expenses, one seventy-nine six sixteen, so we had a gain in seventeen, about seventy-seven thousand. Now, this doesn't include capital outlay because I pulled it out because I didn't want it skewed. So we look at that separate. The two thousand and eighteen revenues, you can see we end up with a gain of about fifty-three thousand. Two thousand and nineteen, our estimates at this point look like we're going to be at about forty-seven five. So we're having adequate revenues in our water department to take care of our operating expenses, which is what that is, plus do our capital outlay. So things like we're planning on the water tower, which will be done probably in twenty twenty-one. And as well as equipment, which is for water department, will come from there. So right now, I feel like we've got adequate funds, we're doing okay. The sewer rates are based on our water usage. Sewer is more of a problem for us because we have the bond. And with the bond, we've got to service the debt. So we've got the bond principal plus the bond interest. And we had been running on a deficit for quite a while.
They won't let you do that, right?
No, no. We've, we've gone about further than I thought they would let us go. So, so in twenty seventeen, we had a twenty thousand dollar loss. In twenty eighteen, we had almost fifty thousand. And it's looking like we're going to have about sixty-two for two thousand and nineteen. So we've kind of looked at those expenses, really, everything's pretty well set. And in utilities or what utilities are, the bond, we've got to service that. So really, the only thing we have any flexibility on is some of the salaries. And so we've kind of evaluated that, and some of them we think we can shift to other funds because the people are actually doing some things in the other funds. So I'm going to recommend that we do reallocate our salaries and get some of those out of there so we can account for about a thousand dollars by doing that. But we're still going to be running short four thousand two hundred and thirty-six approximately monthly. So based on that, you know, there are different options, the way we can do that. The one that we know about is we know we have about five hundred and thirty-seven users. So any increase there, it's pretty straightforward, we can multiply it. So if we did about a three dollars and fifty cent increase in the base rate, then that's going to give us an additional eighteen seventy-nine fifty. And then what we're looking at is maybe a fifty cent increase on those users from five thousand to nine hundred and ninety-nine. So at each thousand level, they would pay an additional fifty cents. And based on water usage and then kind of allocating because not all of our, we don't have as many sewer users as we do water users, so we've got to do a percentage there. So based on that, our monthly increase should be about forty-eight hundred dollars between those two things. But then when we adjust it for the users, it comes down to about forty-five fifty-six, four thousand five fifty-six. So it's not giving us a lot of leeway, it's not giving us a lot of capital outlay, but while we've got the bond, we have to do a reserve and replacement fund. And if we have capital outlay with permission, we can use that funds. So that's kind of where we're at. On the next page, we've got the sewer. I'm sorry, sanitation. Our sanitation fund's been doing well. Here again, we don't have capital expenditures, so when we buy a new truck, that's not listed in here. So in seventeen, we had a gain of about seventy-three thousand dollars. But if we actually look at our financial statements, it was actually a loss that year because we replaced a truck. So, but the, the gain without any of the capital outlay. In eighteen, that was forty-four thousand, and it's looking like in nineteen, we're about forty-eight thousand. So we allow about fifteen thousand dollars a year for the replacement of the trucks. So five to seven years, we're needing to replace the trucks, and we allow for that. And then we, I'm estimating about six thousand dollars to keep our dumpsters, either new ones or replacing them just to keep, keep the dumpsters up. So if we based it on the lowest gain we have, we're having in excess every month now about nineteen hundred dollars. We have approximately five hundred and eighty users. And these were ones that were reduced to weekly. Had twice a week and then went down to once a week. So I'm kind of recommending that we offset the necessary increase in our sewer rates by dropping our sanitation rates. And we should still have adequate to cover our expenses plus our capital outlay. So to kind of help cushion that for, for the sanitation rate, I'm sorry, the sewer rate, which we have no choice about, we're, we're going to have to do something. So from this information, my recommendation is that we get started on the necessary public hearings and so forth in order to increase the rates and how we can implement that and then that we do the sanitation rates at the same time whenever we get that done.
Are the hearing requirements for reducing the sanitation rates the same as they are for increasing rates? Like, are there any?
I'm, I'm a little unsure. I know the increases, we do have to have public hearings.
Did you ask Alex? If the requirements for decreasing rates, if there's any additional or different requirements on hearings or any, like notifications?
Of course, we could do it all at the same time.
Yeah, they're at the same public hearing.
But I don't know if there's a requirement to increase.
I don't think anybody's got, I'm fine about this.
But, but we do all the, the public hearings will include the whole thing when we're doing it.
And you want, like, the increase, like I said, when we're talking about, it's like, once it's hit hard anyway, we're not increasing, you say on something on the.
Yeah, if it's over ten thousand.
Just the big users, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. Yeah, the over ten thousand and above.
Right.
And the reason I didn't do that is, is.
They're hit hard anyway.
They're currently at twelve twenty-five. And they're going to be hit by both of the other increases. So every thousand dollars of usage, they're going to already have.
We're not, we're not going to increase, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're going to quota on what we can use too, don't we? On what they limit the amount of water we can use from like Clarnes County Dam. And we have averages of what we use.
Right, we have a contract with the amount of water. Yes.
And if we go over it, it likely should be higher.
Right.
We, we have, we have two rates with the, with the water. We have.
The base.
The base rate, which is going to be the same every month. And then we have the usage rate, which fluctuates based on our usage. So we actually divide that between two different rates, yes.
Which I do know, we talked about it, we had a little meeting the other day with Joe and all this, we did have a considerable loss last year from water. That doesn't go through meters.
Usage.
And so I'm hoping that a considerable amount of it was what we fixed over here. Because that did leak basically all the way there. And so we're hoping, I think, because it was, what, like eighteen percent loss that was, you know, it's not going through anybody's meter, we're paying for it, but, you know, it, it's a service line somewhere leaking, which that service line that we fixed over there.
Fixed probably seven, eight, I mean, years.
And so, I mean, we still, I think we still have one or two that we, one, I know, Joe, we talked about that, I think we do have the leaking window. So hopefully, we maybe really drop that by fixing that one over by Delmar's house or over by Jeff's over there, you know, and stuff. So, you know, if we get those, that really helps on the sewer too because it's based on the water usage. So that really, even though it doesn't, but that's the only way they can base the sewer on that. So hopefully, that'll help that one, and we got another one or two. But we know, one anyway, that we got a service line leaking, so, so anything we do there because that's, that's a lot of loss that we, we're paying for, or all the taxpayers that, you know, we down is paying for it and we're not, you know, so.
And it's not being billed out.
Yeah. Little things like that can add, you know, considerable lot. Do you have any questions about what, you know? It's something we, we have to do on that, you know, because.
We don't have much choice.
Yeah.
Because if USDA comes in, they'll say you will raise your rates by this amount. We just assume, make that decision rather than have them make it for us.
Should I stay ahead of them?
So we probably need some action taken.
Yeah.
We need to start the public hearing, right?
They need some, we need some action to proceed as far as having our public hearings because then they would actually pass an ordinance.
Put your hand in out here and just propose a budget.
Change the rates after.
What I want you to do is take it home, look it all over. About two weeks or three weeks before we leave tonight, we'll say we're going to have another, just a budget meeting for a regular December meeting. If you have questions on it, Joe can be at that meeting, Peggy will try to be here. If we got any questions, you got, you want changes, this is just what we set down and.
Loss and all that, what we just went through.
They come up with and stuff, so.
And I put the new figures in there as if we've gone forward with it.
You know, and, and in the meantime, I mean, I'm sure if you need to call, you want to call Peggy and ask her about something, she'll explain it to you or whatever, or whatever we can do, but that's, we'll just, like I say, before we leave tonight, we'll pick in, couple of weeks, we'll have a, or three weeks, we'll have a, you get the budget meeting. That's before and then, come in December, should be no question. You want, we want to make changes in, in that meeting in two or three weeks. That's what we'll make, you know, we take it, look at it, that's all we can do, you know, so.
So maybe, maybe that can be the same night as the first public hearing.
Yeah, we can do that, maybe we could get that, you know, the same.
Sure, that's a great idea.
And when we do our budgeting for other than, when did you, do we do it at the same time or what?
We have to approve the budget.
Right.
Before we get into January. Because state statute requires us to have it budgeted before we could spend anything.
It just, that way, we just don't have to, like actually, we come in December and it just, you know, here it is, you got to make a decision. And I think it'd be nice to go look at it for a month.
Oh, yeah.
Talk it over and have a meeting and then.
And then usually at the December council meeting.
Yeah, so we can have a meeting on.
Okay, so I need to have the notice in the Sentinel for two weeks, tell them about public hearing. So we're here, so it would be in here and here. And then if we, if sometime, well, like here.
Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, whatever, Monday and Tuesday, just one of those.
Because this will be the regular council meeting.
Yeah.
But like Monday the second. To have a.
Special meeting.
Special meeting for those two things.
And put those two things in, that way we have them out of the way.
Budget and the public.
Maybe have it at six o'clock a little bit earlier if that worked for people.
That work.
At December? Second, Monday?
Yeah, December.
Yeah.
And then six will add the regular meeting.
The, the ninth.
Or not, yeah.
Yeah, our regular one tonight, so we'll have another, whatever, special meeting on the second, six o'clock.
Yeah. Okay.
And if you got, like I say, if you got questions about it, well.
So if you have, let me give you a preliminary, so you kind of know what, what you're looking for.
Glad you heard, you know, you have some input.
Most of it is pretty routine. I mean, you look at what we've been spending and you, you're kind of conservative on the revenues and a little more aggressive on the expenses because expenses always do up. So the things that are different, if you look on page two and kind of read through that, that kind of here's, now, I'm sorry, page, page one starts there.
Which is one figure in here, I say that it's considerably lower than what we've got on this one.
Isn't that wonderful? Yeah, that was a good thing.
Yeah.
Was just twenty-three?
Twenty-three. That drops from forty to twenty-three.
On the skid loader, on page two. The backhoe lease is the one that she just reviewed in the minutes to where if we, if Knox, if KCCDC gets a grant, seventy-five, twenty-five, and we would have a twenty-five thousand dollars probably, approximately, twenty-five to thirty thousand.
So where that, where it says forty thousand?
Lease.
That's going to be twenty-three thousand. That's considerable difference. That was just what we was thinking, they was going to want difference.
It's just getting lower.
If we trade. Well, this is, well, it's, it's actually trading, trading the tractor in on the skid loader. We got a tractor waiting to use. Got ninety-four hours on it in four years. And it doesn't work on, it doesn't work on the sickle mower, or they have a, they can't see what it does, so we just try to find a smaller tractor, something a little better than a sickle mower or something, you know.
Sometimes things don't work like they're designed to work.
I mean, they was going to get us back, what, what we get for it. I mean, you know, it's got, so, I mean, that's, but that's a considerable difference. Almost half what we got figured in right there, something, that's a big, big, big difference right there, so, but.
So I don't know why, but you move on to next. Now, did they need to approve the hearings?
Approve that we're going to have a.
Yeah.
Public hearing for rates, you mean, that one?
Yes.
Uh, yes, they really should because otherwise, if they're all thinking, we don't really care for the idea, there's no point in having a public hearing.
As I said, we're at the point that B and R, we, we haven't got to.
Yeah.
Because they see that, they see what comes in, so.
And I know that we hold the public hearings for the.
The utility base.
Utility rate change.
Sewer and.
And sanitation.
And sanitation decrease.
Yeah.
On second. Denver.
On the favor.
Okay. All right.
Okay, Peggy, thank you.
Thanks.
Month of bills, anybody have any questions on the month of bills? Do you understand, is, do they have any questions on the one here?
The one I made a note on.
That I was laying out here? Everybody understands what that is?
Yep.
Yeah, everybody's following the way. That's what we come up with, what the figures are at the bottom. And so, you know, it wasn't his fault, he wouldn't have got all that one hour related and just wanted to deal with it and get hooked up. And so, anyway, that'll.
That's from December of eighteen, I remember. That was my neighbor.
Make a motion to, make a motion. On the favor?
What's the name?
On those, okay. Send us these comments, we don't have any of that on that. I guess, Joe, we're ready for you.
All right, we'll start with my report. Everything's pretty much basic, meeting all standards. All the requirements we're meeting. Had a little bit of a higher rate with the flows since last time, but it's just some infiltration and stuff. Fight it all the time during the wet season. He's got his UV all taken out, put away for the winter. So it's all stored away in the heated shed. We're going to have to be able to work on it at some point before it goes back in next year and beat some new oil rings around the bulbs. We've got a few fixtures that are leaking a little bit, so. Other than that, he's got a bad water valve on the grit removal down there. It'll call in to the manufacturer. We're just waiting for them to get back and tell us what the part is going to cost us and how we go about purchasing it. So next month's water bill down there will probably be a little higher than usual because it's leaking by. And it has to run all the time right now, it'll freeze up.
So has it been doing this for some time? Will it help on?
It's, it has been, we found it, what was it, we found it a week and a half ago, I think it was.
I'm talking about six months.
No, not that we know of. But it may have been leaking a little bit, but now it's, it's leaked and it's cut a groove inside the valve and now it will not seal up, so, just part of it, I guess. Other than that, everything down there is going fine. He's been trying to get all these year-end reports and stuff all finished up. We've been working on a little bit of that, so. A little lift station update, I really don't have anything back from them. I know the parts are ordered. We met with the pump rep and shot elevations and done all the flow charts and everything. And we are increasing our numbers.
And order them from, what did you say?
They ordered them from Germany.
Germany.
They're German-built pump, flights. And they had to order them and make an adapter to make them work in the pit without having to change everything, so, so that's kind of what we're waiting on. Still probably four weeks out. Willis has said when it comes in, they intend to jump right on it, no matter what time of year it is, they'll, they'll get it done, so. Right now, I don't have a whole lot of updates, that's just why I have for that. Any of you, maybe you've probably seen it, our new shed is up that we've been waiting on. The shed's up and the other building has been repaired where it had some damage. Everything come in quite a bit under budget. A really nice shed to keep some equipment in, we can keep our new equipment that we're getting in a lot better shape now, keep it out of the weather. And we're supposed to be on some time this week to go over what it's going to take to put the power in for it, to get the lines in, getting in with some little parts I need. So that's where we're at on the sheds. It looks really nice, they've done, they've done a good job building it. Our trash deal, where we're still, still trying to work out a few of the kinks in the, in the once-a-week stuff, it's, it's getting by, we're getting by, but. Um, our trash deal, where we're still, still trying to work out a few of the kinks in the, in the once a week stuff, it's, it's getting by, we're getting by, but we're full, we're full on Mondays, a lot. We have to go back on Tuesdays and still get some dumpsters, so, we're trying to figure it out, change a few things around, make it work a little better, we'll make it headway, not perfect yet, I know there's some citizens. Get aggravated with us, but we're trying, we try to get everybody's trash every, every week, and just sometimes it's not right, when they expect it, so. But other than that, everything's fine there. All of our snow equipment is up and going as far as we know, we had to take on plow trucks and have some repairs done on, on the plows, it was not working, the new plow that we got, we had never ran on the truck that we bought. We could not get it to run, we got some, we got a jumper wired and was able to get it to a shop, and it is repaired and working properly. The only thing, we do not have a hundred percent put together, is the small spreader box, we tore it, cleared out and done nothing today, and got the chain shortened in it, the belly chain, it was binding up, so that was quite an undertaking. Should be finished up tomorrow, everything be ready to go. I'm thinking of hers here, unfortunately.
It sounds like you got a couple of good weeks to get back on your feet.
Yeah, we can have a little break, um, the problem we're gonna have this year, it may not be a problem, just a setback, we may have to look into purchasing some material this year. Usually we don't have to purchase any sand, salt, cinders, they cut off the program short this year, I don't know if they had a shortage of cinders, but we did not get our cinders this year. We still have a good stockpile, just depending on how the winter goes, we may have to purchase some, some salts, some lines, some, something to make our product go farther, so. I don't think it'll be a major expense by any means, it's just something we're probably gonna have to look, look at doing. Though while the weather was decent, and we had a little time, I don't know if anybody's noticed, we got, we got a pretty decent portion of the fire hydrants and stuff cleaned up and repainted, I know that had been something that was on a few of his list, you've done. Then the weather just got us, as I said, they're talking some decent weather coming up again, a little snack, we'll try and get some more done, they're, they're looking, just making things look a little better. The pavement work, the repaving and the chip and seal, we feel like we got along decent, not as, not as good as we'd hoped, but then we got along pretty good for all the troubles we had, it was quite a fight this year, the, some of the equipment did not wanna cooperate. We ended up completely relaying nine blocks with matte material and re-chip and sealing, and then them ones that we relayed were in pretty bad shape, so I think, I think the people that are around it really appreciated what we've done for. And then we chip and sealed thirty-six blocks before we ran out of our oil and everything, so, you know, we had two loads of oil, purchased roughly twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of oil. And a little over five hundred tons of chips this year, we've spent somewhere between the thirty-eight to forty thousand dollar range right now, we had fifty in our budget. We're going to haul as much as we can for chips for next year with the remaining money, and just stockpile them on the lot, rock doesn't go away, it can be used next year, it'll just give us a, a head start, you know, so. That's the, that's the game plan, uh, I, I hope everybody is pleased with what we've done, and, and next year there will be more money, and we'll get on it earlier, we got, we feel like we've kinda got a grasp on it now, and we'll be more done, so. That's where we sit on the roads. The only other thing I have on my list is in next year's budget, it talked about purchasing a truck for this sewer plant, and it'll be a basically sewer plant truck, but it'll have a service body on it. And it'll have a crane on it for lifting pumps out of these pits, um, we're pulling some of them by hand, it's, we figured we're gonna end up with an injury, and a doctor Peggy, the money is available now. And there is a truck locally that fits the bill, a hundred percent, that has everything you want on it, that has a crane on it, service body, it's a two thousand and sixteen model truck, it's a newer truck, it's in really good shape. And we can purchase it for thirty-six thousand dollars, and I'm asking you guys if this is something we can amend the budget for, and go ahead and get this taken care of. It, it's just, safety is one of the big things, and the convenience of having all our parts, our tools, our stuff to get the job done in a bunch of time, more time than matter, so.
It is something in the future too, that you can put a plow on it.
Yeah, it's a one-time duly.
You can eliminate a couple of other trucks we have.
But, so, it's here, it's, it's here locally, and we'll be ready by the end of the week for purchase, so, instead of waiting, I, I guess what I'm asking you all to do is approve an amendment of the budget. Or for the purchase of this truck. So, the way we're pulling pumps now, it's, and I said we're pulling some on by hand, the heavier ones that we cannot pull by hand, we use the backhoe for, and all it's gonna take is one slip, and somebody's either. Yanked down into the hole, or loses a finger, you know, injured, I'm just, I, I don't want that happening, I don't want any of my employees or myself injured, so.
Probably lose a lot of time doing it that way too, huh?
We do, then this new, this truck has a wireless crane mounted on the truck, we can, you can stay away from the, the cords and the chains, you know, the trip hazards. It'll make things a lot easier for service work, pulling the pumps up, servicing them, changing the oils, and doing inspections on them, it just, it will speed up the process, and then when we do have problems. We'll have parts on the truck, or tools on the truck, we spend too much time having to run back to the shop because we just didn't have that right answer, or we didn't, you know, I mean. It's, it's a waste, and, and some of that stuff needs addressed in our time of need, so. That's what I'm asking of, of you all this evening.
Joe, you did say thirty-six, right?
Thirty-six, yes. And I, I've talked to Peggy, the funds are, funds are available, we're not, it's not gonna hinder anywhere, so.
I will reallocate the funds then.
I do know, cause I've helped in the past when I worked there and stuff, but when they pull in pumps, pull them in the backhoe, you pull the chain in, you reach up, and you hook a chain, you let it back down, you, it's not the safest thing. Used to be crank, an old crank, but the old cranks are wore out, and they used to move them from station to station, but the, the cranks, old hand cranks are rusted out, the holders are all rusted out, there's, but, so that's.
So we're gonna replace the truck that is down sewer planting out, down there, we'll get rid of it then.
Yes, it can, it can be put up for bed.
Forward, you go right now.
The old, the older, the ninety-six model forward.
Probably, if we put a plow on that, then maybe the next.
Next year.
Oh, maybe get rid of the rubber max, that flat deck, cause all we do with is push no, basically, we got the other ton truck, you know, and it does, it saves on insurance, it saves on maintenance, wear and tear and having too many vehicles, we can't just have them running over with vehicles, you know, and stuff, but.
I think I'll second Alex's motion, what we amended. So, motion to amend the budget to allow for this thirty-six thousand dollar truck, and this is out of the capital improvement, Peggy?
Cause we are looking good for our, our backhoe and stuff, it's still in the making, but it looks very feasible, that we're gonna be real good there, you know, and stuff, so. So that's not gonna be. In some, we're gonna have a, a pretty good find if the backhoe comes through, deal, if it finishes through, and then we'll have our backhoe to sell, we're gonna have our skid loader to sell, if, if we ended up trading for the skid loader, we're gonna have skid loader sell, so we're gonna have considerable amount of.
Yeah.
Equipment money there to, to kinda put, kinda where we would need to maybe put it and stuff, you know, cause what we're gonna replace with the tractor is just a two-wheel drive, probably a tractor that. Basically nobody wants, but they work great for what we wanna do, you know.
Cheaper tractor.
A five or six thousand dollar tractor, you know, we're gonna do everything we need to do, cause nobody wants the two-wheel drives anymore, they're, farmers, everybody wants four, you know, and those stuff, so, but, that's.
So I'll do it.
Yes.
We got a first and a second, we got a motion and a second, a first.
Any other discussion?
Any other questions, any other questions about it?
Say you have any more discussion?
Before, anything, any questions, I can.
Angela?
I guess it's a vote.
So, the motion and the second.
Okay, motion and second, okay, all in favor? All opposed?
So.
Forty-two.
And to oppose, Rick and David.
I guess Joe, thank you.
Yes, that's what I have. Uh, Joe, uh, done by Ron Stansberry, place here about three big holes down here north of that room, you know, I'm talking about, that tube's been put in. Yeah, let's get some stuff in that if we could, try and put some, some, uh, maybe some D six X or something, and we don't have any patch material.
Pretty good size, uh, it was there.
I talked to Ryan, I guess, I talked to Ryan about the situation, you and I talked about, he's done to, we even present down there, and times, there's not a good spot for a stop sign, and being the time of year. If it was earlier in the year, we would stake them pumps down this slope, but we can't have them down on the plow, so, for, for time being, Ryan and I discussed it, he's gonna watch it a little more, and go from there with it. All right, I'll let Ryan.
Let me see, thank you, thank you, Joe.
Any questions concerned on the report? Nine-one-one would call me right away. I'll go ahead and take that, and we can mark. We'll go, we'll, he's on phone, we can maybe, we'll jump down, let him do the light proposal, once you go, you go on the light, but he may have to be on come to blow off, so, we'll let you. For the light proposal, yeah, whatever, after, whatever it were.
I'm Carisha Devlin, I'm a ag business build specialist, and I'm your extension office, and my new colleague.
Hi, I'm Jen Eldridge, and I am nutrition health specialist at the Ag Business Build Specialist, and she, this is her third week. Yes, I'm brand new, new year.
Brand new, but.
You can have this one, Jen.
Oh, fine.
Like I want.
You need this?
Come.
Is this yours?
No problem, what got you report, that's what?
So Chase, Brenizer, and Crystal Carhoff, they all had different meetings, I think Chase is in Columbia tonight, and Crystal has four H council meetings, so. Jen and I were coming over just as representatives of the extension office, and also we're upset on that committee, that's working on this proposal. So, we received the contract that Corey and I put together, and we had some, some questions, and then some suggestions for additions, and so. I know this is, I don't know if y'all wanna go through all of the different sections, and our questions and suggestions, or if you kind of want a chance to digest them, and, and read over them, and, and get back to us, so, I'll leave it up to you all.
Yeah, this is the first, first they've seen it, I made copies for them, and so, they're just now looking at it, so.
I already did, we spent a whole hour going through it, so.
No question. I have a couple of questions, um, like for the, what committee, uh, for the directors, what committee do you want it, I mean, what, that's up to you guys.
Well, it really won't need to be the Knox County Extension Council, because that's the umbrella organization, and four H council falls underneath the Extension Council, so. The four H council really cannot sign a contract, if a contract is to be signed, it's the Extension Council that will be the one.
So this lease agreement will really be with the.
The Knox County Extension Council, because four H is a program, is an extension program, so, extension will have to be the, the umbrella organization. And this bottom part, it's actually, uh, I believe Chase was, hey, put that bullet point regarding the four H council, but with the Extension Council, we, our officers are elected in February, so.
Okay, so have we changed it to like the first of March, that would give?
That would be better, I guess.
This payment, I would say it's whatever you prefer, the fifty dollar payment.
I thought it was a dollar a year.
A dollar a year too.
Yeah.
Well, for a fifty year, so fifty dollars, if they wanna pay the fifty dollars, cause we're, it's for fifty years, so.
Just to have it.
But every year, either party has the option of.
Right, so I guess maybe we can stick to the dollar.
That's the idea.
Yeah, I never thought of that.
And I know, there's a few of them, I know Corey just kinda used boilerplate language to give us a starting point, but we don't plan on, there are a couple of things in the, the lease that the first draft that talked about, like leaving it open for us to do things there, we don't. Plan, I mean, there's nothing we plan on doing in that area, is there? I mean, it would be theirs.
They're not, they're talking like a campground parts.
Right, just the.
That was gonna be an offset deal.
Just the, yeah.
That's like I seen, like the maintenance, I think we just talked like, they're just the maintenance area.
Yeah.
That they're getting.
Yeah, I don't know if that was clarified enough in the first draft, in my opinion, but that's all that was expected.
No, we had a lot of discussion about the parking lot, I think it's section two.
Like, the entryway, as I think we talked, where it was, all that's, I think is responsible, you guys do whatever you want, take care of it.
And I don't.
Like the parking lot, and there are things on your side too.
I don't, like, you would never, I don't know why we would reserve the right to charge for you to the parking lot, I don't think that's.
Yeah, I think that's earned.
Yeah.
You know, the building that the, with the old.
Old clubhouse.
Clubhouse, it was, we're gonna keep it, I think, I thought the ticket was involved.
I know, well, it was not clarified.
Yeah.
On the section six.
I figured it is on the north side, it's a bridge.
And I think last month when we talked, Corey just didn't really know, he drew it up, and then, cause he was here last month, and he just wasn't sure what exactly, so that's why he left it so broad, but.
So that needs to be changed, you know?
Yeah.
It's not including the clubhouse. It's not including the clubhouse.
I'm gonna see if like a black color.
Will you tell us more about, um, on the section seventeen, the, your ideas on that with it? Possibly allowing kids to keep animals out there, what are your thoughts?
Well, one of the, uh, one of the things that's come up over the years is that. Um, there are some kids that live in town, or maybe if they live outside of town, they just don't have property to where they can keep an animal. If they're, were wanting to raise an animal to show up at fair. And so, uh, it was a couple of years ago, the commissioners were entertaining the possibility of, uh, buying Jim Sears Building. And the property that came with the Jim Sears building, they were gonna let us use to possibly have a fairgrounds out there, and we were talking about the. Maybe having an option, uh, to where kids could keep an animal out there. Um, of course, that fell through, that didn't work out, but there are other counties, um, that do have property to where kids can keep animals. And we have, if that was an option, and it's something that we worked out, of course, we'd have to work out some kind of contract. Between the kids and their parents to make sure that they did, um, keep up their end of the deal. As far as taking care of the, the animal. But, uh, you know, one of the, the things over the years, a lot of people, uh, they're a little envious of the kids that are able to show. Animals and then sell them at the fair, because they usually get a good amount of money back. Uh, that they can use to, you know, for savings, uh, or even for the purchase of another animal another year. We do have an individual in the county that has said, if there is a child that wants to show an animal. That they would provide, like a steer or an animal to show, but if, um, you know, that doesn't help kids that.
Right.
Uh, live in town, and there's not an option, um, or place to keep.
I think it's a lease, I mean, once you lease, you can do whatever you want with it, that'd be up to you and whoever's doing it. We shouldn't have nothing to do with that.
We just have to change, but yeah, I'm all, I'm all for leaving it open.
Piece of ground, I can do what I want, for my, I want my cattle, I'm a farmer, whatever.
And this is something that would, um, have to be discussed in detail, and everybody on the extension council and four H council be in agreement. This is not something that would be entered into lightly.
Right.
If we decided to go that route. But it's just, that whole discussion came up again, and we just thought we would inquire with you all to see if that could be a possibility.
What, will you explain more on section eighteen, that was the other one I had a question on? The option for a fair board council.
So, um, one of the things that's, um, come up among the committee members is. Cause right now, as I mentioned earlier, the extension council's the umbrella organization, and we have four H council that, that falls underneath there. And, um, the fair board, our existing fair board is actually a committee of the four H council. So, it's kind of, you know, it's a little hard to explain, we don't have a fair board like a lot of the other counties do. And so, just in discussion as far as ex- expansion in the future. And, you know, this would be something that would be a, a potential, but for us to ever, you know, perhaps. Grow the fair as far as having things like other counties do, and, you know, what if, and this is just throwing stuff out there. But what if at some point we were able to have a carnival, or what if at some point we were able to have, you know, some other activities going on at the fair? Uh, what if, uh, y'all decided that you weren't interested in developing a campground, and so this group decided to. To take that step and develop a campground? Well, um, I know, I'm for one, and one of the ones that has some reservations about all of that falling under the extension council. Because Crystal, right now, she has, um, only twenty, twenty hours of her forty hour week. Is for, uh, four H, doing her duties as a, uh, youth program associate. And so, like, as far as taking in fees for a campground, you know, camping fees, or if it was some other fees involved. Or a lot of exchange of money, I, I really don't know if our office is the one that needs to be taking those funds in. Or if that's really a good use of her, the hours that she has. And so, um, that was just, we just had that discussion, what if we had a fair board like other counties do? And, um, some people on the committee are not, um, not in favor of that, because they feel like, well, that'll just be. Another meeting that we have to go to a month, because it'll probably be some of the same people that are on it. Um, I, I do know that the committee that has come together to be on, um, to look into this, I mean. Uh, those, we have some representatives from the county that aren't involved in extension council or four H council. So I think we could draw other people that might be interested in being on a fair board, but. Um, so yeah, for right now, um, we were just thinking, it's not something that we're necessarily gonna move to doing a lot of new things. Right away, but just thinking about the possibilities, you know, in the future, if we were, or had the opportunity to maybe do some more things out there. It may be a different structure that needs to follow, but, but that's, if y'all are uncomfortable with that, I mean.
What change would you need on our, on, on the existing lease?
Well, they, um, I think if, um, we did go forward and have a proper fair board. The lease would have to change, so it would be the, the fair board, that would be the ones that signed off on the lease instead of the extension council. But I, at this time, it, I think, um, the consensus of the committee is leaning away from having a fair board. I think they're, they're, I think they're worried that people will, will not associate it with four H, and so maybe not be as.
Okay.
Um, as favorable as supporting things out there, because they see it, you know, separate from what four H is doing for the kids, which. It wouldn't be, it would be, um, just a, a board that was trying to, to do different things, uh. Or not only to use, but also for, you know, everybody in the county to develop that, that property and.
Um, I'm, I'm on the extension council, and. It attracts us the idea to have a fair board and, um, not be on the hook. For something that kind of, like, what would you call it, a subsidiary of extension does? You know, um, so, anyhow.
I guess my question is, for, on our end, I mean, it doesn't really matter to us, and so. I mean, you, like, I could see where, either way, but I could see where it would streamline your work process for things associated with that. So, for the lease.
It's yours.
If you, you know, it's still, so the actual clause would be, you know, it, as long as it's a charitable corporation. And fosters a four H program or other programs, and then, then it, like, I think it still falls under that, right? And then if for some reason it needs to change.
And we do the lease, could we just come back to council and?
Corey here, but I think it would, yeah.
Do we need to have wording in there that says, like, if we need to come back and redo the lease, I mean?
Well, just like the year, in a year's time, when you do, if you just pay your yearly, a dollar for your year, the next year, you can change all that. It's just like a lease, if I go lease something, if I wanna change something on it, I, I got the option.
Renegotiate.
Yep, every year, if you want to do something.
So, one of, I will, going back to that, one of the. The reasons why some of the committee members are interested in maybe doing a one-time fifty. It's some concerns that we do the work of getting a building and stuff put up out there. And then all of a sudden, we come back to renew the lease, and it's, the lease is not gonna be renewed. So, I guess, um, um, it, you know, let's just say a few years from now, we have a totally different city council. Made up of all new members, and they have, you know, a different idea of what, uh, to do with that property, and so. You know, then there's.
We locked in for like fifty years, was it a deal that we had?
And that, that would be on our end of fear that if your committees change and people don't wanna do anything. We don't wanna be locked out of the land to sit there for forty, fifty years with nothing happening, but I. Wonder, I mean, that would be a Corey question, to figure out a clause for, for both, like.
I'm a little worried about the refunding, you know, like, how do we refund it, I guess we just write it back?
Think it becomes a donation at that point.
Why not break it into smaller chunks and do like ten, ten years or five-year increments?
Well, no, I'm like you, though, I think you need, need to do like a fifty-year deal, just the fact that it, it ties you up or it's yours. Maybe you could do like a, another lease off of that, that you could.
Or just add a clause in it, it's a fifty-year lease, but if no activity for a certain number of years, then it reverts. To protect both sides.
Yeah, that was to protect both sides, because if four H disbanded or let the buildings go. The, the city wouldn't wanna have to sit back for fifty years and let it be like that. Yeah, so Corey definitely needs to be involved.
Alright.
Both, both sides.
There's another one on here, back here, about the insurance. If it's a property, you guys got your building on it, I don't really think it's our responsibility to insure your buildings. If they're yours to take care of, it's just like me, if I don't wanna insure my house, it's pretty much up to me, if it burns down, I mean, S O L.
Usually with the lease, someone, the two people have, I mean, I, I'm not familiar with land use, okay, but definitely without, with, I have rental property. And my tenants, I encourage them to get, you know, rental insurance, and then I also insure the house.
We'll have to have like a lot of building just for, for backup, we'll carry it anyway, on the property, just if somebody falls down, something breaks a leg or something. They wanna sue us, we, they can't. But I'd say like the material, uh, things that are out there that you put up, you'll have to insure them yourself. I don't even think we insure the buildings out there now, do we? The little golf carts, the stuff, do we insure?
We have all that insured, yes.
But if I guess you're gonna use a building to say it, I don't know.
And then just, um, to add that, um, if, if it's not renewed, then, um, the council has the right to remove the building that was added to the property.
Does that take care of like the buildings that's already there? If you guys maintain, put roofs and stuff on that, does that give you the option to come back and wanna take the, take your roofs all off and everything?
No, I think it's just the, the buildings that we have, the not the ones that are, were already on the property.
I think they'll leave it away, I don't know.
You can make sure that the wording. Replaced just while we physically have the property, not the property that's, that's already there.
Yeah, and I think in section twenty-one, that might cover, this is jumping back to, if a fair board were formed, I think. The verbiage in that will cover a lot of those with the, um, cause it's about changing the charter to the bylaws. But if you formed a fair board, I think that, and let them know within thirty days, and then you could redo, I think a lot of that would be covered there.
And again, um, right now, the, the committee, if, most of the committee is not in favor of a fair board. Because they just, they think that they have so many different meetings to go on.
Right, and that, I just don't want you to be restricted out of any option for fifty years.
And I appreciate that, I appreciate that, cause I, I think that it's an option that needs to be considered.
I've asked a lot of questions, anybody else have questions, sorry?
There's somewhere about the sanitary, what, if we like bathrooms and everything? Are you guys, I mean, put bathrooms out there, or are you guys responsible for us to do it, or?
We had talked, has anybody been out to the Herdman Seaver Lake to see the, the restaurants that they put out there? We had talked about potentially being able to do something like that, um, out there. For, when we had the fair here in town, we, we rent porta potties, and so that's always an option too during fair, just to have porta potties out there. Um, we didn't know, you know, what the, what the situation with clubhouse would be, if it was, um. If that would be a possibility to use that during the fair, how you felt about that? When we have the demonstrations, uh, where the kids, um, they do, um, they show all of the things they've made over the year. They, their projects, um, we've been using the, the, um, the building right beside the Sentinel. And I don't think we're gonna have the option, of course, to use that building anymore, so we're either, uh, gonna have to move to the community center. Or if we do have the fair out there, it would be nice to be able to, to have everything, you know, out there, and so. If we could possibly use the clubhouse just to.
Uh, I don't think the clubhouse would be able to handle the, it's just got a subject tank, and it just, it won't handle.
That, maybe the art hall, but.
Another restaurant.
And it'd be all right, that it would be, uh, you'd have to do some major undertaking on it to get it up to.
Definitely just plan men that will. In the future, perhaps be able to, if it's okay with you all.
Cause I think, I mean, we, like, I don't know, we could pump, pump them out with our pumper truck, if they use them.
Right.
Like over there at the Seaver Lake, they go over and come and pump them out, I mean, we do have a truck that we can pump them out, I mean. That wouldn't be, I don't think would be a big deal.
Right.
But I think that's what we don't plan on, if we had a campground, we just have to do it once, twice a year, but. We'd have to maintain them anyway, once a year anyway. That'd give you, I mean, something I often think about. That's all my questions, anybody else?
So mostly, I think the board almost has a copy of this, and they can look at it and know what questions to. Present to Corey, or, you know, he's got to. present to Corey, or, you know, he's got to put something together to get back to extension council.
And if y'all have any other questions, after you've had time to digest this a little bit more, um, can I give back with Chase, or if one of us in the office would be glad to answer and clarify anything that you have questions on.
Thank you for your thoughtful consideration, it's so nice.
Yes, thank you. Yes, uh, Jen was actually bragging on you all, uh, a while ago, saying that it was nice to see a city council that had discussion, and that everybody, some, some voted yea, some voted nay, because she said Kirksville, the city council does not have that.
And so, so Jen, what's your last name?
Eldridge, I have two last names, but I'm going Jennifer Eldridge.
Eldridge.
Yeah, but I'm Jennifer Eldridge, how is it officially? Um, it's just a mouthful.
On the Sentinel, I, I've read that.
Yeah.
A little bit of.
Oh, good, okay.
My echo, yes.
Yes. And so where do you, you don't live in Knox County?
No, I live in Kirksville, I've been there since two thousand two, though.
Oh, okay, so come over here.
I was surprised at the age of your children, though, I thought she doesn't look that old.
Oh, well. Though the echo has a good filter on the camera. Well, thank you for that, yeah, no, I do appreciate a thoughtful discussion, I really appreciate when not everybody agrees, cause I think that's, that's good, sometimes you get in a group and everybody feels like they gotta, everybody's gotta conform, and I appreciate that people don't mind disagreeing, and respectful disagreement in politics is something I appreciate greatly.
I'd like to see a lot more of it.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, I'm going to do business, uh, cushions are closed, uh, on that street down there, it's, uh, East Smallwood Street between Kelly House and Frank Crabtree's, that's kinda going with that other, but I.
And Corey.
He was gonna put you here, he thought he had to draw it up, so I, I had to go to, so, maybe next meeting, we'll.
Yeah, so he said. December meeting.
Yeah, we'll get that in and stuff, so. Okay, Blue Room, Mara wants to request, uh, extended hours for New Year's Eve.
So.
Make a motion if we.
They have made motions.
All in favor?
And so this will include all of the listeners.
Yeah, that'd be all of them, so.
Alright, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they must stay up and down, so we'll be here, whatever, and stuff, everything, so.
DTs.
DTs, yeah, whatever it is, I didn't know what they were, but, uh, okay, then we need to set filing date for, or April.
Oh, yes, municipal election.
Yeah.
Uh, and of course technically the state sets, so that we're supposed to be acting like we're.
Yeah. What? You have to post it on the, you have to post it and all that?
Uh, yes, it'll be in the paper, and the filing begins there.
Is it the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, is that when it's, it begins seventeen through the twenty-first?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So, does anybody wanna make a motion to call for a city election and set the filing?
Mark, make a motion.
I'll second.
Got seconded, oh, a favor?
I'm not on the ballot.
Okay, well, opposed, okay. Uh, we usually have, uh, all of the comments here, I think one thing we need to, we look about is, uh,
Seventeenth. It's April seventh, we'll be there.
I think we need to put an ad in the paper this year, that we're not liable for any cars sitting along the snow removal, might not be here. Cause last year we had to pay for windshield.
Me, too.
And if they're sitting out on the right way, I don't think we should be liable for that car sitting on that right away.
Been on already? I don't know.
Any of you guys are on that? Last year we had to pay for a windshield.
Alright.
Cause of snow removal.
So.
So, I think we need to put an ad, we need to put an ad in the paper that we're not liable, anything sitting on the right away. This car was sitting on the right away last year, you know, when she had to drive away to park, it was parked out on the street, said we threw a rock or something, broke windshield, we had to pay for windshield. If it's sitting out on the right away, we shouldn't be liable.
No, that's true.
So, we need to put an ad in the paper, we're not liable for damage to vehicles, but we gotta move the snow, I mean, there's places, we have signs uptown, but there's a lot of people park around, and they park in front of their house, and, you know, I know some people are really struggling for places to park, but
Right.
that's, but then that makes them have to push it out around there and stuff, so, if they're sitting there, that's fine, but we're not gonna be liable for them.
I know, they're looking for parking there. Yeah.
Cause what cost us last year, it cost us a hundred dollars for windshield, or whatever it was, and stuff, and.
Yeah, we should, so, not pay it, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, but if one of the deals is better than arguing with them, we paid it, went on, so.
Yeah.
So this time, we will have it.
Yeah, we'll put an ad in the paper that we're not liable for, you know, cause, you know, I mean, I know, I know it's hard sometimes for people to park, but still, we've gotta have someplace pushing the snow and stuff, so, if everybody agrees that they think that sounds very reasonable motion. We need to make a motion on that, or?
Like a red made a motion.
Down there, seconded, all in favor? Okay, cause we just, you know, we can't be liable for everybody's cars, you know, we got, we got pushing on somewhere, it's just based on the certificate's bad, so. That's all I have on anything like that, so, unless somebody's got something else. But go home and look at that budget, like I say, look it all over good, and.
Is there something else?
Yeah, we can update them on whatever we know about our vehicle insurance.
Oh, okay, yeah, that was, uh, we had, they just sent us, and the one, who we have insurance with now, they, they're gonna add a thousand dollar on deductible, I never heard of, on, on liability.
Liability.
To the hail, it would be like a hail, I never heard of, usually hail damage or deer or something, you don't pay anything on that, but, but still, it would be cheaper to stay with them, because one of them is, uh, last year we paid ten thousand, it's gonna go to eleven, four, last year we paid ten.
Is there a complimentary insurance, or something else to add to it?
But they're gonna add a thousand dollars.
I mean, is there something else that goes with it, though, if it does, like hail or deer?
No, it ju- it's just on.
Just on the coverage?
That, cause they.
It's the deductible for hired and non-owned vehicles, a thousand, and for your auto liability.
Like with a hail, it was like five thousand dollar damage, we'd add the, deduct a thousand dollars, you know?
There you gotta take.
Which I've never heard of that on insurance, and the other insurance, the other, through Hawkins is two, the other company would not be, but it's gonna be thirteen without that, it'd, it'd still be higher, so we're still better off just to, I mean, no, no, we're not gonna have something like that, I mean.
If you don't use it, it won't, it won't last.
Yeah, right, it didn't matter, you know, the insurance is gonna be, it's still cheaper, so I think we'd be just as well off to stay with what we have.
I think they just wanted to offer us.
It went up, that's not unusual, I mean, every, everything's gonna go up, it's rarely ever good down, so, it only went a thousand dollars basically from last year, so.
They just. Yeah.
So that's not, you know? But, well, we got, we got the traffic fix for forty-one hundred, I think they give us five thousand or something, so maybe, you know, but it would've just been like a thousand dollars, I'd foot the cost. We shouldn't be hitting deer or nothing, cause we're in town with all the, so, unless, I guess you're going down the road, we go get parched, something could happen, you know, but, but, uh, so, we're covered anyway, you know?
Yeah, you just never know.
So that, unless somebody else has something else, I'd.
I'll make a motion in the journal.
I'll second it, second it, all in favor? Alright.